Good afternoon, folks. Welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. In attendance today, we have from the committee, I've got myself. I see Councilman Burnett of the Eighth District. Councilman Cohen from the First District. Councilman Costello from the Eleventh District. Councilman Glover from the Thirteenth District. Councilwoman Porter from the Tenth District. And folks not on the committee, I've got Councilwoman McCray from the Second District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Members of the Office of the President, I see Nikki Thompson on the line. Matt Stegman.
Mr. Chair.
Aaron DeGraffan Reed. Do not see Aaron. Representing the Mayor's Office, Natasha Mihue. Don't see Natasha and Nina Themelis. I know Nina was running just a couple of minutes up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Nina. So this evening, the committee will have a hearing for Bill twenty-one dash zero zero one eight R. Investigative hearing, Workday Enterprise Resource Planning Implementation, for the purpose of inviting the Director of the Department of Human Resources, the Director of Department of Finance, the Director of the Baltimore City Office of Information and Technology, and other interested parties to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the development and implementation process of the Workday Enterprise System. What focus groups and other work groups were created to identify potential problems during the development process? What offline performance tests were conducted to identify potential gaps in service delivery capabilities? And what corrective processes have been put in place to remedy the countless problems that the city has faced during this implementation process? This bill was introduced on February eighth, twenty twenty-one, and it was co-sponsored by Councilmember Danielle McCray. I want to thank MIT Finance and HR for their transparency and hard work through this process. I know it's been quite the puzzle to figure out. I also want to thank the union reps who have been very diligent in letting us know the issues and problems and look forward to hearing from folks again today. And I'm going to open the floor to Councilwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the committee. I'm not going to take too much of your time with remarks. The original hearing was set out to allow for more transparent overview of the world out of Workday and how it was implemented, along with addressing its flaws and timelines for remedying our city's workforce, which included thousands of city employees, many of whom are our essential workers who were not paid on time or underpaid. I do want to thank our various agencies for working quickly to address concerns, and I look forward to hearing additional updates at this hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCray. We're going to move on to hear from agency representatives. And first, we're going to start off with the Law Department. Hearing no one from the Law Department, we're going to move on to the City Administrator's Office. Anyone from the Mayor's Office can speak up for City Administrator if there's anything to add about.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The City Administrator was not able to attend this afternoon's hearing, but any questions, I am happy to bring back. Otherwise, he has received a briefing by Baltimore City IT, the Finance Department, and HR in reference to their updates.
Thank you, Nina. And I believe we have a presentation from the Department of Human Resources, OIT, and from Finance. Let's all open the floor to you guys. I asked that we keep the presentation to about fifteen minutes. I want to make sure that we dig into the meat of the issues. So I'll open the floor now.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Can I get the ability to share my screen?
You should have the ability now.
Thank you. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
And do we still see it?
Yes.
I'm going to pass it off to Director Raymond.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members of the Council. I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. I'm joined by Todd Carter, Director of Information Technology for the City and the City's Department of Human Resources, Quentin Herbert. We'll go through this, we'll keep it to fifteen minutes. So background on today's meeting. We appeared before the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee in February to discuss system stabilization issues surrounding the December twenty deployment of Workday Personnel Payroll System. We discussed the strategic and transformational benefits of Workday and shared that our challenges were comparable to others moving from paper-based legacy systems to modern-day payroll pay-to-punch systems. Workday uses best business practices and allows for conversion of paper-based processes to automate processes, moving from manual to automation. Workday provides transactional-level transparency to data for employees, managers, and executives. Finally, Workday brings our employees to a higher computer skill level. Next slide. We stressed our number one goal is to make sure everyone is paid on time and in full. Today, we reiterate that this goal remains our number one priority. We communicated how we have partnered with agencies, union officials, consultants, and employees to stabilize the system as quickly and as accurately as possible. We also explained the additional training that has been provided and the daily communication occurs with key stakeholders in pursuit of fixing employee pay issues. We also offered our remorse for employees who have experienced pay issues, and we have worked tirelessly to resolve them and will continue to do so. This time, very few systemic employee pay issues remain. Now, we're moving to indicators that demonstrate consistent progress and improvement. More employees are entering their time, and managers and supervisors are approving it on time before the end of the pay period. The majority of off-cycle checks produced are for adjustments to pay, not for employees being unpaid. Finally, employees are entering time using multiple methods, including clocks, kiosks, workstations, and mobile devices. This is a graphic of data representing the number of no pays for active and temporary employees. As it relates to Cycle A, we provide data for four pay periods. January fifteen, January twenty-nine, February twelve, and February twenty-six. I want to focus your attention on two of the categories. Active, regular, no pay, without hours, and active temps, no pay with hours. That's what we don't want. We don't want to have individuals with hours with no pay. So if you look at the graph for Cycle A, you'll see that active, regular, no pay with hours is a blue line. It's zero, and it's covered up by the gray line, which is no pay with hours for active temps. So the point is that for both of those categories of employees, we've been successful to properly pay people. So we don't have anyone with hours reported with no pay. Now, moving to the second graph, Cycle B, for the pay period January eighth, which was the first pay period of Workday, January twenty-second, February the fifth, and February the nineteenth. Again, we'll focus on the two categories of no pay with hours. And you'll see that if you look at the scale, there were only two individuals for the pay period January eighth and January twenty-two that had hours with no pay. And that was resolved by February fifth, where there were nobody with hours with no pay. And the same applies to the temps. So the trends are heading in the correct direction. Next slide. This is a slide by pay group Cycle A and Cycle B for the number of time sheets that had to be adjusted after payroll was submitted. So for Cycle A, we're looking at four pay periods, and you can clearly see the downward trend. What this means is that the employees are properly submitting their hours. Supervisors are approving that time, and it's getting better each pay period. For Cycle B, you see a similar trend. There was a spike for February the fifth due to the number of adjustments that were made for one particular agency, which was the Department of General Services. Other than that, you can see that the trend is heading in the right direction also. Next slide. Slide is looking at regular hours, overtime hours, and out-of-title hours that needed to be added after the payroll was submitted. And again, these numbers are indicating that the trend is heading in the right direction, where there are fewer hours for those three categories being added after the pay period closes. And the trend holds the same for both Cycle A and the Cycle B payroll groups. And we did a snapshot of three pay periods for each of the pay groups. Next slide. Number of off-cycle checks issued. We issue the off-cycle checks as adjustments to pay to make employees whole. And as you can see, again, for Cycle A, Cycle B, four pay periods for each group. You can see the significant downward trend with both categories. Next slide. When we appeared before the committee, we were in the tenth. We provided information that there were sixty-one priority issues. At that time, we indicated that forty-two of those sixty-one issues were resolved, leaving an outstanding number of nineteen. So we had a sixty-eight percent closure rate when we reported to you. Today, we're providing the update that of those nineteen remaining priority issues, eight, excuse me, eighteen of the nineteen have been closed or fixed. And they included leave balances and permission leave, BPD compensation issues, absence issues, step progressions, longevity progression, and work schedules. So as of today, there's one priority issue remaining, and that has to do with overpayment recovery. There's a need to recover overpayments that were made to certain employees in a variety of agencies for a number of different reasons. We began the overpayment recovery process with the library system. We are recovering the overpayments over a three-pay-period cycle. We have completed Cycle Two for the library system. The rollout was well-received by the library employees. It worked well. So using that model, we're rolling out the overpayment recovery process citywide. Next slide. This matrix represents issues raised and resolved since the February ten meeting. The union president hotline surfaced several issues impacting either individual employees or small or medium-sized group of employees. Several of the issues that were brought to our attention predated Workday and took some additional time to research and resolve. Now, the matrix you see represents either the calls or the emails from the union presidents that came in. Essentially, there were forty-two calls and emails. And of those forty-two calls and emails, we have closed twenty-eight of the issues, or sixty-seven percent, with fourteen items still remaining open. And all fourteen of those items pertain to one agency, the Fire Department. Retiree issues that were surfaced through the calls and emails have been managed through a newly-created committee, the Retirement Action Committee, and through the existing Health Insurance Committee, because that is where normally retiree issues are resolved. Next slide. Since the last meeting, three new issues surfaced. The first was hazard pay. Hazard pay requirements were reviewed and confirmed with the Labor Commissioner and the Agency HR. As a result of this review, there are now an additional two-hundred-and-twenty-five employees who are eligible for hazardous pay that were not previously eligible. Configurations were updated and time tracking. And starting this week, those individuals will receive back pay for the hazardous pay. And that's approximately two-hundred-and-seven individuals that will be receiving back pay through payroll beginning this week. Now, the final note is that these are small-dollar amounts ranging from thirty-six cents to roughly thirty-six dollars. But it's important to make everyone whole. And the configuration issues made the hazardous pay will accomplish that. Next slide. The second issue has to do with Cub and AFSMI meal allowances for overtime. The configuration was changed to automate the meal allowance for Cub and AFSMI for individuals that work three hours of overtime on a scheduled day. This eliminated a previous manual process where the supervisor had to make an individual determination of whether the individual qualified for the meal allowance or not. So this new configuration to automate the meal allowance reduces the burden on the manager and eliminates the judgment of whether the overtime was required. Four-hundred-and-one Cub employees and two-hundred-and-ninety-four AFSMI employees will receive back pay for these meals. Cub employees receive the meal allowance if the overtime occurs three hours before or three hours after their normal shift. The AFSMI employees are entitled to the meal allowance if they work three hours of overtime after their shift ends. Next slide. The third item is double time, and this related to Cub and Local Forty-four. Double time is earned for hours worked on the seventh consecutive day worked within a pay period. Some employees' individual work schedule does not coincide with the normal beginning of their agency's pay period. In other words, some individuals' pay periods are not in sync with the overall group pay period. As a result, for the managers to manually determine whether double time is due. In this instance, it's three departments, Public Works, Transportation, and DGS, that are impacted by this. What we're doing is turning off the automated feature approving double time because the agencies need the ability to do manual approval. Now, in the future, if the city consolidates its pay periods, this issue can be revisited and reassessed and determined if we can do double pay in an automated manner. But for now, it will be manual. Next slide. Now, these items, there's three, are either in test or closed, and I'll briefly run through them. What's currently in testing or open is an issue related to the Fire Department, related to overtime calculation, overtime related to FSLA. Items that are closed are, one item was, it came to our attention that two employees with secondary employment were not receiving their check from the second employment. It was a Workday setup issue that's been resolved. Second, off-cycle lists have been mailed to the various union presidents. And finally, presidents, as we previously discussed in the matrix, that the forty-two calls and emails with additional issues following the last meeting, we were able to resolve approximately thirty-two specific issues that had been raised by the union presidents. Ongoing actions as we move forward. We will continue to provide high-level guidance, communication with agency personnel. We'll continue to improve our communication methods, which includes emails, phone calls, the TAP system, and other inquiry-response methods. We will continue to provide agency-specific training for unique agency scenarios and business rules that require modification. Continue to strengthen our onboarding process with central HR and agency HR to get people into the Workday system as rapidly as possible in order to minimize any potential delay in them receiving their paychecks once they've been onboarded. And finally, we continue to improve our compliance reporting for time entry and manager approval within the agencies. Next slide. So in summary, most of the remaining priority issues that are still open require user testing by the agency and sign-off by the agency, and that is presently in progress. Agency HR practitioners, timekeepers, and central payroll are becoming more comfortable and confident using Workday and are responding to and resolving employee issues in a timely manner. Employees and supervisors are becoming more adept at using Workday timekeeping module, which is resulting in more time being entered within the pay period and supervisors approving that time within the pay period. Finally, the project team has provided additional remedial training to timekeepers to focus efforts to get employees and managers to enter and approve time submittals in a timely manner. Next slide. Hopefully, that was within the fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Director Raymond. It's a little tad over, but I think helpful nonetheless. I want to thank you guys. A ton of work trying to clean up some of the issues that we've uncovered in the last month or so, or the last few months. So I want to thank you guys for pulling together that presentation. I wanted to circle back to one of the questions that the committee brought up in the last hearing. We talked about ways to proactively identify payroll issues without relying on off-cycle checks. Looks like you guys have a number of things that you were looking at. How are we doing that? How are we identifying problems without problems being brought to us? Anyone's welcome to take that question.
I'll take a stab at it. Councilman Conway, Quentin Herbert, Director of Human Resources. I think that one of the things that we're doing, we're looking at multiple data sets and not just the off-cycle checks. We're looking at the number of employees who have time adjusted after the pay period closes. And then we're not just identifying them, but we're circling back to those agencies to put the press on them to make sure that those adjustments are made before the close of the pay period to ensure an accurate pay and a timely pay. That's one of the things that we're doing. Another thing that we're doing with central HR is working with our agency HR practitioners to ensure that new employees are onboarded timely in the system so that our new employees don't miss out on that first paycheck or on that first paycheck because they aren't entered into the system timely. So those are just a couple of the additional data points that we're looking at and fixes that we're deploying across the enterprise to proactively address issues before they become a problem.
Thank you, Director. And that's a great answer. I think partially what I'm looking for, realizing that, you know, this problem isn't so cut and dry when we look at it. And, you know, the data is a little more complicated. I appreciate what you guys showed us. I noticed in the reply, your February nineteenth letter that you sent as a reply to the committee, you mentioned some HR data audits. Can you describe what that looks like? And also, if you had any perspective on the results, what we're finding from those audits? I'm really curious what that looks like.
I would defer to Mr. Carter with respect to what we're seeing with the data polls. We've been working with not only the city, but with our contractor, our vendor as well, in looking at the data and cleansing the data and taking proactive corrective actions on what we see. So Todd, I'll turn it.
Yeah. Council, excuse me, Councilman Conway, we'll need to get back to you with the specific data. The data audits, I'm just not prepared to answer that question. What I don't want to do is start speculating as to what the results are. Let me get back to you with the specific facts.
Sure. Do you have any, without the data, any perspective on what that audit process looks like or what it's looking for so that we understand how you guys are capturing information on this problem?
Well, certainly, it's doing the compares where we can with data between ADP and data with respect to Workday. We recognize and we know that there are a number of what I call conversion items where you move, say, Name One to Name Two. And then the, but the piece where we really tend to. you move, say, name one to, um, name two, uh, and then the, but the piece where we really tend to have some of the challenges are in some of the longevity issues and the compensation issues where calculations need to occur. That's where the data audits get a little bit, uh, tricky, and that's where the comparisons have to, to show up because ADP handles data one way versus, um, Workday another way. And so if you look at tax rates, you look at, um, um, all of those kinds of components that go into a calculation, it, that's what makes the, the actual, um, employee case-by-case, um, audit, uh, a little, little complicated, but also something that has to be a deeper dive into, um, investigations. But we can get you the facts on what we found as we've been going through those comparison, looking at those issues, looking at those transfer, transformations and calculations, uh, we can do that.
Uh, thank you, Director Carter. I, I want to open the floor to Bill Spencer. Councilwoman McCray, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank our agencies for the presentation that they put together. I want to see the majority of my questions were answered during the presentation, but I do have this one largely, largely surrounding and just around training, and this is probably for, um, Director Raymond. At the February tenth hearing, additional training for managers and time approvers was mentioned in order to mitigate further, um, in order to mitigate further errors. Um, you also briefly spoke about training within the presentation that you just gave. Has the additional training proven to be effective, resolving both the primary and the non-primary issues? And what has the additional training looked like?
Okay. Councilwoman McCray, uh, I'll address it this way. Uh, what you've said is correct. The training that we implemented is, is either daily training, weekly training, or weekly, weekly town hall meetings with the agencies. We've been doing this daily. So for example, uh, for any particular agency, we have a consultant, we have someone from central payroll that serves as a team, they reach out to the particular agency, whether it be the fire department, DPW, DGS, whoever, on a scheduled basis every week. In some cases, it's daily. In some cases, it could be twice a week. For agencies experiencing minimal issues, it might be once, once a week. But, uh, this is occurring every day of the week. We provided a schedule in the appendix, uh, with the, the first hearing. We can provide it again because it, it laid out the schedule, excuse me, by pay group of who was being trained and what the frequency was. We have continued that, and I think it's been successful because you can see the trends are heading in the right direction. More employees are completing their timesheets before the pay period closes, which means that it reduces the need for off-cycle adjustments, meaning that extra check, a manual check that has to be produced. Supervisors are approving their employees' time before, before the pay period closes, again, reducing the need for an off-cycle adjustment. Uh, the agency HR practitioners, because of the training, they're better able to communicate with their agency employees and agency supervisors. So we, we will continue to do this training until the entire city government is stabilized.
And Councilwoman McCray, if I could just, uh, add on to something that Director Raymond says, some anec- anecdotally, uh, I've also been meeting with the agency HR leads out in the agencies, and I recently met with the agency HR lead in DPW, one of the largest agencies, and she commented about how thorough the training was, how great it was with vendor and the, uh, the central payroll lead, and that they have made the training mandatory within their agency. And they, within the agency, have seen a marked difference in the bureaus where the supervisors and managers have had the training versus the bureaus where the supervisors and managers have not yet had the training. So the, the, the training is having, to your point, an immediate impact on the employees' comfortability in approving the time and getting in the system and making sure that the, the, the time is approved before the close of payroll.
I want to thank you both for your responses. Uh, Mr. Chair, that ends my questions. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
McCray, uh, I want to open the floor to questions from the committee, if any folks have any questions. Uh, I see Councilman Glover, uh, Councilman Ramos right after.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Henry, and those that have, uh, taken initiative to make sure that, uh, Workday has been working. Uh, I did want to, I'll give kudos to you guys because I have, uh, talked to several DPW and Cub workers, uh, where they reached out to me prior to us having our first meeting. And, uh, when we had that meeting, I sent emails over to you guys, and that Friday, everything was addressed, so I really appreciate that. Secondly, I want to say, uh, when would Cub and Local Forty-four members, uh, have that opportunity? How soon would it be before they reach, uh, the point of getting those back pays for the mail money?
I may have to follow up with you on that, but I believe it's in progress because it's been concluded. But, uh, I'll follow up by email with the specific, uh, date.
Yeah, my understanding is that will be in this week's pay.
Yeah, or, or next week's pay.
Yeah, it's, it, but it, it is imminent, uh, Councilman Glover.
Okay, so we say it will be this month, though?
This month, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Glover, uh, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Director Raymond, and, uh, I appreciate it. Uh, and of course, my colleagues. And I want to go back to a question I asked at the last hearing about the, um, the, you, you had mentioned the testing of the system, uh, before we, you know, you've been back to, to, uh, launch it. I guess I didn't press hard enough in terms of, um, you know, we, we've got all these errors now that we're trying to fix. And so what happened when all that testing happened that you didn't catch, you know, what would happen with these unique, with these situations? Um, because I'm hearing that it's not all, always just the training that was the problem. It was actually, you know, how some of the overtime was calculated, et cetera, et cetera. So how come we didn't catch that ahead of time and now that we're spending all this time and, and people are really hurting?
I'll, um, I'll start off with the answer. I don't know that, uh, uh, Councilman Ramos said I'll answer it completely. But, uh, one of the challenges that we have is that our, our business processes, our business rules are not documented consistently, um, and thoroughly in every case. And we've had paper-based systems that people, um, use and train on word of mouth in a lot of cases as opposed to, here's a document, here's a procedure, here's a process that you need to follow, and here is all the details. It's not to say that we don't have any of that, but what we have doesn't necessarily get to some of the level of detail for some of the things that we're, we're kind of doing now. And, and I think that, um, um, to the, to the greatest extent that all of our employees work hard to do all of the testing, to do all the training, uh, there are just a number of unknowns, not only within the project team, the subject matter experts, but there's no reference document that says this is where you can get the answer or the details to this particular question. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's certainly a challenge for, for us as we, we work through some of these systems.
Got it. So hopefully that documentation will continue to move forward so that that doesn't happen again.
But what I, I think one of the things that Workday does for us is, is one, it gives us the transparency that we haven't had. So we now can see where our data is incorrect, but it also gives us the ability to deploy our configuration and see exactly how things are calculated and when they're calculated. So, so, so we've certainly made a step, um, taken one of the steps we need to make for better documentation of our business processes, is to be able to test better. Uh, but I think holistically, we, we have a ways to go. I don't think Workday, the other systems as well.
Thank you. And I have, uh, a question about, um, Director Raymond. Thanks for working with me and my constituent partners. Hopefully, we're going to resolve that issue with what he's dealing with. This is still okay.
Yeah, without mentioning that individual's name, uh, that he will, that person will receive the check by this Friday.
Okay, thank you. Um, I appreciate that. And, um, I'll give my, um, my other colleagues a moment, and I have a couple of other questions later on, um, after my.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Councilwoman.
So, um, thank you so much, um, Director Raymond and Director Carter, um, for, for this presentation. A lot of the data integration and data migration questions that I had the last time, um, Director Carter was graciously enough to have an off, um, ad hoc meeting with me to discuss it. Um, so I'm grateful for that. I did have a follow-up question related to, um, direct deposit. So as we are coming, um, towards this next pay period, um, on this Friday, um, I just wanted to ensure that some of your quality assurance metrics included the, the, um, the direct deposit, um, indicator as well. So I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you, and thank you all again for the presentation.
Yeah, Councilwoman Porter will add that, uh, to the metrics.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Porter. Any other questions for folks on the committee? I wanted to jump in with one more question before I go to Councilwoman Ramos. So, um, one of the issues that we, we talked about, um, in the last hearings is about reimbursing folks for payments incurred as a result of not being paid on time. Uh, I was curious, um, if you guys had any, any data on how many cases we've had to do that for and.
Okay. What we had previously, I'm s- sorry, yeah. I would.
Oh, please do. Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I'll address it. Um, we had previously communicated to agencies that what should occur is they should complete the normal expense voucher, attach the documentation, uh, have the supervisor sign it with whatever the documentation is, whether it's late fees, et cetera. I don't think we've received much. So what we're going to do now is, uh, we're modifying the form slightly, and I'm going to send out directions to the agencies that those forms should be sent directly to my office for prior approval, so that we can, uh, track them. The other thing that we're doing is, uh, we've created, we had previously created a sub-object to use, but what we're doing now, we're creating an entire budget account number to use so that any of the vouchers that hit that, uh, account number will be able to automatically track the dollar value. So, um, uh, that should be in place, I would say, by the end of the week. Because it's, it's using the existing, uh, expense voucher, s- slightly modified, but, but just calling it workday-related, uh, reimbursement request.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, and then the other question is actually on the flip side of that. Uh, we, we spoke a little bit about in the presentation, overpayments.
Yes.
I want to know if we had any data on how many overpayments we've seen, um, and if we had any sense of how much.
Yeah, uh, we do have that information. I don't have it on the top of my head. We can provide that. But essentially, the way it works is if the overpayment is less than a hundred dollars, we just adjust it out of the next paycheck. If the overpayment is greater than one hundred dollars, we take it out over the following three pay periods. So what I had indicated earlier was we, we started a pilot with the library system, and, uh, they've completed the second pay period. Uh, it went smoothly. Uh, there have been no issues, hiccups, et cetera. So because it went smoothly with the library system, we know that we can roll it out to all of the other agencies that are impacted, and we will be doing so in the month of March. But we'll be able to provide, so for example, I'll be, I should be able to tell you how many overpayments, the type of overpayments, the number of individuals for the library, how much we've recovered, and it was not a lot. I believe it was in the three to four thousand dollar range. Uh, but we'll be able to provide that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Director Raymond, you talked a lot about the, um, you know, off-cycle checks and payment. Um, I've gotten a couple of emails about, um, health insurance and retireeses, and that some of those calculations have not been done correctly. And so I'm wondering, uh, if you sort of look at, you know, the health insurance piece and the retiree piece to make sure that everybody's where they're supposed to be.
Yes.
And Councilwoman, I, I can speak to that. Uh, that really is not a workday issue. Uh, that, those issues are more related to the city's recent migration to the Aetna MAPD for Medicare eligible retirees. And I, I think that, uh, Director Raymond alluded to earlier, we have created a retirement action committee that consists of representatives from Central DHR, both, uh, the fire and police retirement systems, the ERS, as well as some of our labor stakeholders that are retirees. And we've begun to dig into some of those issues and, 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 and problem solve for those issues. So those aren't really workday issues. I think those are more process issues related to uh, our retirement processes and enrollment in retirement, retiree health benefits.
Thank you. I appreciate that. No more questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Any other questions from, uh, members of the committee or other council members in the, in the hearing? And I want to recognize, uh, Chair, Chair Stokes, who is now in the, in the meeting. All right, with, uh, no further questions, we're going to move on to, uh, public testimony. And we'll get the instructions up here in a moment. So the committee staff will coordinate, uh, the public testimony, so please be patient. Uh, if you are connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking, and users who cannot be identified by name will be unmuted, will be unmuted by the host one by one, and if you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when you are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of the testimony. And if the speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or to provide their testimony in the chat function. With that, I see a hand raised by Josh, Josh Fannin. Josh, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May it please the members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. My name is Josh Fannin. I am a battalion chief in the Baltimore City Fire Department, appearing before you today in my capacity as president of IEFF Local nine sixty-four, Baltimore Fire Officers, to provide you the experience from the boots on the ground, the officers of Baltimore City Fire Department dealing with the repercussions of Workday. Contrary to what you and your colleagues have been told, the problems with Workday remain widespread and mostly unaddressed. Recommendations from our members, who are the actual payroll administrators for our agency, have gone unacknowledged and unanswered. A short list of unaddressed problems include the following: Paychecks that are short or absent any pay for wages, hourly regular, regular rates and hourly overtime rates that are incorrect, incorrect routing of direct deposits, off-cycle checks not delivered in a timely fashion, out-of-title payments for personnel working in a higher rank not paid or paid incorrectly, Fair Labor Standards Act, FOSA, overtime payments for eligible employees not paid correctly or not paid at all, or payments made to ineligible employees. Leave balances are wildly incorrect still. still, use of leave not paid at the correct hourly rate, hazardous duty pay omitted, et cetera, et cetera. This is not an inclusive list, but it is far longer than what was presented here today. We have been provided no plan or acknowledgement in addressing these issues. To answer the questions this committee poses in your agenda today in relation to the Fire Department, one, there have been no focus groups or work groups whatsoever, including our members, the exclusive payroll administrators. Number two, we have received feedback regularly regarding longevity issues. However, that problem is far from solved. No other problems or plans to address some problems have been shared. Yes, sir.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. To Councilwoman McCray, we have received absolutely no additional training at all, not a single minute of additional training for the payroll administrators. That does not surprise me because they've been putting in the time correctly all along. Again, the system design is the problem. Finally, I hope that I have heard this fiasco blamed on human error for the last time because the implication is that our employees are not submitting their time correctly, and this is a false narrative. Thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you, Josh. I want to remind folks, if you would like to testify, you can press the raise hand function on the bottom right portion of your screen. Seeing no further testimony, we're going to open up the phones. I see Solomon Lynch. Solomon, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have two minutes.
Yes, so I agree and concur with exactly what the gentleman who spoke before me said, but my situation is a little different. An individual audit absolutely needs to be done because, you know, my situation, I was affected, my insurance was canceled, you know, I have late fees, things of that nature. You know, I have children, you know, I, I haven't been made whole from the month of January or February. I just received an off-cycle check, and it was 48 hours, but I, you know, I mean, incorrect overtime, incorrect holiday pay, no stipends, you know, so I'm not exactly sure where the gentleman was, is getting his data, you know, as far as things are getting better, but, you know, they, they remain the same. Now, I will say, this past check was right, but you had me scared to do overtime, you know, and my position requires us to do overtime. But I mean, you weren't paying me for the regular hours. So, you know, I mean, that's the position that you have a sense. So, you know, didn't really understand why you don't have someone solely assigned to just, you know, going itemizing, you know, people's errors and, you know, making people whole, you know, you know, you have somebody for each department where, you know, we can get in touch with them and, you know, tell them what is going on with us. And they can just, you know, go through each check and then just cut us a check and then end this fiasco.
Solomon, you have 30 seconds?
Okay. I understand why it's going on for two months. Each pay period, I've itemized and I've turned in my errors and, you know, and again, I haven't been made whole. So, you know, really at this point, you know, my life is in disarray because I'm not able to pay my bills. So that's my testimony.
Solomon. If there are any folks that I see, I see Rich Langford. Rich, you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Conway, and City Councilmember for allowing me at this moment to speak to you guys. President Fannin pretty much touched on all the topics that I was going to touch on. We've been in constant communication with each other to address these issues, but we haven't had communication from the department, from, I'm getting more communication from Director Raymond and the consultant than I do from my own HR department on these issues. We have sent, as you've seen by the list of emails I've sent over, I sent over twice as many to our HR department that have gone unanswered. It's totally unacceptable, and it can't continue. We had a deadline of February 18th. We're now two weeks past that with no sight and end to these issues and no updates on where we are. It's just, it's disheartening. It's a disservice to our members who are out here during this pandemic, doing everything they can do to keep the citizens of Baltimore healthy. And we cannot get answers. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Rich. All right, I don't see any other hands up. I'm going to give you guys just a couple more seconds. If there are folks that'd like to testify in the meeting, please click on the raise hand function on the bottom right. Councilman Stokes?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. My question is, I talked to some of the employees over at DPW, and one gentleman I talked about, he's overdraft, they had, he had almost $1,500 in overdraft fees. I wanted to find out how are we addressing it also? Because if you get your check short, and then if you're getting too much money, you still had to pay the overdraft fees because they're still on your account. How are we handling that piece also with city employees in our department? Because that don't make you whole, and that puts you in a whole different kind of position that you can't even now withdraw any money or can't even write a check because the fees got to be cleared first. So that's my question.
Yeah, understood. Councilman Stokes, this is Henry Raymond. As I indicated earlier in the presentation or the answer period, the individual should put those expenses along with the documentation on an expense voucher, have the supervisor sign it, and submit it to Accounting, BAPS, Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services, for reimbursement. So that's all they have to, have to do.
Okay, thank, I just want to know, so if I see some of the guys out there, I can share that information with you. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Stokes. Any, any, any other questions? Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me? Thank you. Director Raymond and Director Herbert, just listening to the testimony from Mr. Langford and Mr. Fannin, and I know that there's, there's a, it sounds like a work group that's set up. And I think, I think what I heard Rich and Josh say is that they're, they're getting responsiveness from, from you guys directly. I, I just, can you, can I have the two of you touch on that? Like, I just want to hear that, I want to hear what's happening, and I want to be assured that folks like Josh and Rich and the other municipal employee presidents and leadership have a direct line to you so that when one of these issues is coming up, you guys, you guys are getting it directly from that, and you guys are able to get it to the right people, even though it may not be going through the normal channels so that you guys can get it addressed.
Yes, Councilman Costello, I think, I think I can answer that question. I think that what the chart showed previously is that the requests that have come in from the Union President hotline, the only remaining issues are related to fire. All of the other issues we've been able to resolve. The fire issues, we've been working with the agency, some of them related to longevities, and some of them related to, for example, what the appropriate overtime rate is. We've been working with the agency to correct those issues. And we've, I think we've communicated back that we're working with the agencies. And I think that there has been communication across a number of issues with our labor stakeholders, where we have had meetings with them to facilitate hearing their concerns and action planning around how we, how we address and tackle issues that we're raising. What I will say is that some of these issues, to go back to something that, that Director Carter alluded to, some of these issues are, you know, pre-date Workday and relate back to poor business practices or our business practices not being document, documented. And that led to configuration issues when we went live. We're, we're working with them and working through these issues. And once we receive a, a request from that Union President hotline, the, the executive sponsors meet along with the consultant, we action plan, we bring in the agency and discuss what the agency, what the action plan is. Some of those decisions around what the configuration should be require agency approval, and then they require testing and sign off. So it's not as simple as, you know, a, a, a two or three day fix. Some of these fixes will take time to fix, fix and to get the approval of the agency and the testing and sign off, but we're committed to, to, to doing that.
Director Herbert, you, you alluded to something twice now, and it got me to thinking about this question in particular with regards to us documenting. Did you guys lose me for a second? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. With regards to documenting processes, internal processes, is that something that should have been captured in the implementation of Workday, just so far as that, in the contract?
There, it was. There was a whole phase called Business Process Alignment. The Business Process Alignment phase took place before the configurations phase. And during that Business Process Alignment phase, we had analysts that sat in all of the agencies, that looked at our AMs, that looked at our EBOUs, that looked at our policies, and that also looked at what the people that sit in the seat do, right? You hire a person, what does that look like? When, when you terminate a person, what does that look like in the system today? And they, they did that alignment. Unfortunately, the city with our paper-based systems did not do a good job with some of the specialty agencies. There were, there were ways that things were done, let's say, let's use fire as an example. There were ways that things were done in the Fire Department that may have been done differently in DPW. And post GoLive, we're realizing that the configuration for fire needed to be like this and not like that. And we're, we're now realizing those issues and fixing those issues. And with the fix, we're now documenting as we fix to say, this is what, the configuration needs to be this way for the Fire Department as opposed to DPW or DOT. And so it's an ongoing process. And again, we, I think that what we are seeing is that once we realize the issues, the, the fix is not taking as long as, you know, as, as we would have initially may have thought, we're getting those configuration issues resolved rather expeditiously.
Thank you for that explanation. We're going to open up to the phone lines. We're going back into testimony. I don't see anybody on the phone lines, so I'll, I'll give a couple more seconds in case folks in the meeting would like to testify. Seeing no further testimony. It's my understanding the, the sponsor of this bill wants to, to vote on this today. Is that, is that correct? Councilwoman McCray?
That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Costello and second by Burnett. All right, roll call. Conway? Yay. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen? Councilman Cohen?
Hold this call to.
Yes.
Two hours. I don't.
Costello? Glover? I want to, I want to acknowledge that Council President Millsby is in the meeting technically. Councilman Glover? Councilman Glover?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. Can you repeat, please?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is our vote on bill. On the resolution. Thank you. Councilwoman Porter? Councilwoman Porter? We'll come back to Porter. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Porter, are you there? All right, we're, the, the bill passes as favorable with sixes. This, this will move on to second reader in the next council hearing. And this hearing is adjourned. We'll move this bill forwards. Thank you, folks.